All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the November 7th, 2022, 2022 session of the City of Elgin Planning and Zoning Commission. And I will start with the roll call. Look to staff for that.
Commissioner Abuali?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Commissioner Miguelo?
Here.
Commissioner Valdez?
Here.
Commissioner Wildermu?
Here.
And Chairman Cox?
Present.
We do have court.
Excellent. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from the October 3rd, 2022 session of this commission. Is there any discussion? If not, the chair will entertain a motion for the approval of those meeting minutes.
So moved.
All right. Thank you. Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Miguelo?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Abuali?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wildermu?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Minutes approved, 7 to 0.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the chairman's opening statement, which is my opportunity to welcome all of you here tonight. Always want to take the opportunity to welcome my fellow commissioners, those of you watching remotely, staff down front, sitting over here at this table in the back. Jobs they do is very important to make this meeting happen and happen well, happen fluidly, and be transparent. So we appreciate all of those jobs. Again, appreciate you coming here tonight. We've got one item on the agenda tonight, which is for a petition for 450 Shepherd Drive. We'll hear more from staff about this petition coming up. But before we move on to the agenda, just wanted, especially since we're seeing some new faces here tonight, to just kind of tell you what the role and procedures are for tonight. So for this petition, this first petition, we will look to city staff for presentation of the board packet. We will take the opportunity as a commission to ask staff any questions we may have. Then we invite the petitioner team to come on up to the lectern, give us your thoughts, add anything you'd like to, to what we've had for consideration from city staff. Then we will take, again, the opportunity as a commission to ask questions of the petitioner team. Don't see too many people here in the audience who may be here to comment, but we open each of the petitions up to public comment. So if anyone who is here tonight has public comment, then we will hear that. Then we close the public hearing portion of this petition. We typically look to staff for any final comments, and then we, as a board, deliberate and vote on the petitions. For tonight, the conditional use, the Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommending body, so we'll pass our recommendation on to city council. Assuming that things are approved, there's a couple of dates that city council will consider each of the petitions. You can work with staff to find out what those dates are. But tonight, again, is the opportunity to speak and present, so if you have thoughts, comments, questions, please, we'd love to hear them. We typically, at this point in time, move on to the oath, but I think before we do that, just wanted to bring it up. We had some people who joined us tonight, maybe for this very item, but they've left. We do have, again, people watching remotely, so before we move on to the items on tonight's agenda, do you have an announcement to make? Staff advises me that there was a petition for Giffords Crossing, which is a 44-unit residential townhome development out on Big Timber Road. That was originally scheduled to be presented at tonight's meeting. The applicant has, however, requested it to be removed from tonight's agenda, so that project will not be presented, and it will not be discussed at tonight's meeting. The applicant has requested additional time to revise the development plans and provide additional information and responses regarding some of the correspondence that's been received. The applicant said they anticipate to resubmit the necessary plans and documents at a time to be scheduled, or I'm sorry, in time to be scheduled for the February 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. So if and whenever the project is scheduled, again, for the public hearing at this meeting, all the required legal notices will be, again, provided, including posting of the zoning sign, mailing in the neighborhood notices to surrounding property owners. Thanks for that. Appreciate your patience as we went through that statement. So again, kicking back over to the agenda, we have the opportunity, for those of you who will be testifying tonight, to take the oath from our court reporter, so if you can stand, even if you think you might be, well, great, you've got the whole first row. Again, face the court reporter, and she'll administer the oath. Okay, we can move on to item F, for petitions to be considered for 450 Shepherd Drive. Got a couple of petition numbers assigned with that, and I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Chairman Cox, and for the record, we have provided proper notices on this petition.
Thank you.
So this first petition before you tonight is the application by Grand Legacy Group, LLC as applicant, and Elgin Properties, LLC as the property owner, who are requesting a map amendment from CI Commercial Industrial District to GI General Industrial District, and a conditional use to establish an adult-use cannabis craft grower at the property commonly known as 450 Shepherd Drive. So as usual, we will start with the aerial map indicating the subject property. This is the property of the northwest corner outlined in yellow at the northwest corner of Berkeley Street that runs east-west, and Shepherd Drive that goes north-south. It's a 1.1 acre property that is located in the Burnage Brothers Industrial Park, that is generally located west of McLean Boulevard and south of Route 20. It is, as you can see, zoned CI Commercial Industrial. Most of these properties have a similar purple shade, that means those are industrial zoned properties, some are CI, some are GI. The properties to the north and to the east, across Shepherd Drive, are zoned CI Commercial Industrial. To the north is a one-story office building that's occupied by an engineering firm. To the east is the Elgin Lanes Bowling Alley. And then to the west and to the south are GI zoned properties. The one to the south is actually a planned general industrial district. That property directly across is vacant space that is part of a 14-acre property that is home to a 245,000-square-foot office and warehousing building. And then to the west is the GI zoned property that is a one-story manufacturing building that produces some various types of metal products. Here is the bird's-eye view of the subject property, a little bit of a closer, closer view. As you can see, the property includes parking areas north of the building, and then to the south of the building. The parking lot on the north side has access to Shepherd Drive, and then the two parking areas to the south include two separate access driveways that provide access to both parking areas, and then the two loading docks on the south side of the building. The building is a multi-tenant building, includes various types of office uses, several general contractors, a couple of real estate offices, and a dentist's office. All of those tenants are expected to vacate the premises by the end of the year, by December 31st, 2022. Here are a few photos of the existing building. It's a two-story building that was constructed in 1976. So the applicant is requesting two things. Number one, the map amendment, or rezoning, of the property from CI Commercial Industrial to GI General Industrial. Again, properties to the north and east are zoned CI, those to the west GI, and then to the south is the planned general industrial district. And the reason for the rezoning is simply because the proposed adult-use cannabis craft grower is not allowed in the CI district, neither as a permitted use or a conditional use. So they're requesting the rezoning to GI, where an adult-use cannabis craft grower is allowed as a conditional use. So that's the second part of the request. So they're proposing to establish a cannabis craft grower within the existing building. The applicant has received a license from the state of Illinois. They initially applied to have a license for a facility in Chicago Heights, however, they are now requesting to establish that facility in Elgin. A craft grower is essentially a smaller manufacturing or cultivation facility than a cultivation center. Craft grower is permitted to have up to 14,000 square feet of cannabis-growing space. The applicant has received approval for the initial 5,000 square feet of cannabis-growing area. They are allowed, and they are anticipated to apply for and receive, expansion of that cannabis-growing area in 3,000 increments, up to the maximum of 14,000 square feet. Their initial plan in the first phase is to occupy the western portion of the lower level of the building, which is right here, with their 5,000-square-foot canopy. And then, as they receive expansion in the future, they're looking to occupy and expand within the remainder of the first floor, the lower level, and then also onto the second floor. The applicant is not proposing any changes to the building, the exterior changes to the building or the site, other than the installation of an ADA-accessible ramp from the south parking area to provide access to the lower level of the building. The proposed hours of operation would be from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, seven days a week. They would, they're expecting to have up to 14 employees. They will have a security guard on-site during the hours of operation. The facility will also have extensive security cameras, and the Elgin Police Department, as required, has reviewed the proposed security plan and has found that acceptable. The letter from the Elgin Police Department is in your packet, as one of the attachments. The applicant is not proposing, and it's not permitted, to have any on-site consumption of cannabis, and they will not have any retail sales of cannabis on-site. Cannabis would be sold only to licensed companies, state-licensed companies, and it would be picked up by state-licensed transportation providers. Facility is required to provide 30 parking spaces. Property currently has 57. It would lose one parking stall due to that ADA-accessible ramp on the south side, so they would have 56 parking spaces, which satisfies the parking requirement. The applicant has committed, and the facility would not emit any odors. They would be installing various mechanical equipments and filters to assure that there's no odors leaving the facility. They're also going to be recycling water runoff. The facility is expected to use approximately 400 gallons of water for the, for the 5,000 square feet of cannabis, or growing canopy. That's per day, however, of the 400 gallons of water, they anticipate about 100 of those to be recycled water that's collected from the runoff. So in all, that 300 gallons of water per day is comparable to one three-person household on average. Any cannabis waste would be grinded and mixed with other various materials, so that the cannabis compound is less than 50% of that, of the material, and then the waste would be then disposed of at state-approved facilities. With the two types of, or the two parts of the application, map amendment and conditional use, there are standards for both map amendments and conditional use that need to be satisfied. Staff has provided the overview of our, of the standards and our assessment of those in the packet, so I'm not going to go into details on those. Overall, staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the packet. I don't believe there's any to note. The only one is that they will be able to expand within the facility without the need for any amendments to the conditional use approval. I mentioned that earlier. They expect to apply for the additional square footage. They have cannabis-growing canopy up to 14,000 square feet, so this, this conditional use approval, if allowed and approved, would allow them to occupy the entire building. And with that, staff, again, recommends approval, subject to the conditions. The applicant's team is here, and they can address the commission.
All right, thanks. Start, on my left, with Commissioner Abuali, do you have questions for staff?
No questions.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions.
Commissioner Miguelo?
Demir, how does the city plan on policing the use of growing space? So, you know, we grant this, and then, you know, they build out per plan. How do we know that I can use more space than what's currently licensed? Is the city going to police that? Or how's that?
No, the city would not. It would be up on the state of Illinois to police that square footage. That's not a, that's not a city requirement, it's a state license and state requirement. So from our standpoint, they were going to be approved for the entire building, and then state will regulate on the square footage of canopy they can grow.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Valdez?
No questions.
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions.
And Commissioner Wildermu?
Just confirming that, I think I read that there's a, like, 1,500-foot buffer between growing facilities, is that, because I think the one we just approved is, like, three miles away from this one, so just want to confirm the space between growing facilities.
Yes, the only other one that we have within the city, actually, the city has approved, it's not opened up yet, but they're in the process of the building permit review. It's at 1,300 Abbott Drive. It's sort of a northwest portion of the city, so it's more than 1,500 feet from this facility. And that, again, is a state requirement, a state law, it's not something that the city of Elgin implements.
All right, I don't have any questions for you. So then, at this point in time, we'll invite the petitioner team to come on up. If you want to change it up, or you've got thoughts, you want to, you know, for, don't feel like just because you sat down, you can't get up in a minute, so if there's something additional, all right? We want you to be heard tonight. See, see, you're deciding who's going to speak, who's not, so there is flexibility. If these two don't cover everything, just walk on up. But one, one general instruction is, as you come up, if you could, please state your name, spell it for the court reporter, give us your address, and then we'd love to hear your thoughts.
My name is Christine, C-H-R-I-S-T-I-N-E Johnson, J-O-H-N-S-O-N. My home address? 4007 June Berry, J-U-N-E-B-E-R-R-Y Road, Naperville, 60564.
Good evening, chairman and commissioners. Thanks for having us here. Rod Collins, R-O-D-C-O-L-L-I-N-S. I reside at 14124 Thorn Berry Court. That's T-H-O-R-N-B-E-R-R-Y. That's in Plainfield, Illinois, 60544.
So again, thank you to the chairman and to the commissioners. We just want to, we can't say enough how excited we are to come to the City of Elgin. We know our original plans were to go, or at least three, almost three years ago, when this process started, were to go to Chicago Heights, but things have changed. Of course, we had the delay, and then that gave us some time to research and look for what fit our needs as well, and the communities. So we're excited to be here. We feel that this property benefits us for multiple reasons. It's off the beaten path, it's, you know, a little bit more hidden. We don't want to bring any, any visual activity to us, or any awareness brought to us. The building is already set up for mostly for warehouse space, so it's pretty much ready to go for us. And as Demir pointed out, we'll be doing things in stages, so we'll ask for the building permits for the stages that we're going to use at a time, and as the state gives us the go-ahead or permission to expand, then we will do more permits and expand accordingly. So that may answer some of your question with expanding out and things like that. We do recognize we'll grow with the state and how they allow us to. We're looking forward to bringing our, our team here to the city, and also being able to extend, like, education and resources and be a benefit to the community. So we're, we're excited to be part of the community, and that's what we want to be looked at.
So once again, what made this property so, you know, advantageous for us is the location. It's not by homes, it's not by schools, it's off the beaten path, and that's where we're more, you know, that's where we care about the most. Number two is, it's, it gives us an opportunity to give back to the community. So Elgin Community College, Judson University is right here in Elgin, and that's what we plan to do, give back. We're a team of African-Americans, we're social equity, and that's what we plan to do, give back to the less, the less fortunate. In fact, we've already done so with our neighbors to the west, Pads of Elgin. We've already partnered with them, we've done some philanthropic things with them, and we plan to do so from here on out with them. So we plan to give back, not just to them, but to some of our other nonprofit organizations in the area, in and around Elgin. Great location, it's already set up, like Christine mentioned, it's already set up for us to go, loading docks. This will be one of the safest areas in Elgin, because it will be 24/7 monitored by state police, so nothing, nothing funny will be going on inside or outside the property, because it will be patched in to state police 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We'll take any questions, but I do want to say that we, we've got tremendous support and help from Tony. Is Tony still here? Yeah, from Tony, from the Elgin Development Group, so he's helped us along the way, as well as Demir, so we just wanted to mention that. Thank you, Tony, while I'm here.
All right, if we're ready, we'll, we'll definitely ask you questions. So we'll start on my right with Commissioner Wildermu.
Just, just one, I was looking through the, the plans for the, in respect to the security plan. I just see that there are some additional considerations given, but that your, your plan is acceptable as proposed. Just wondered if you were giving any additional considerations with what the police department came back? Just curious.
I spoke with, with the deputy chief directly, and he was satisfied, he approved our plan, and he was satisfied with it. We will, we, Demir did mention our hours of operation from 8 to 5. We will have an unarmed security guard, as no weapons are allowed on our premises, during our business hours. As my partner Rod discussed, we will have 24/7 security monitoring, state mandated. They have to come in and approve, make sure it's their systems and everything, so they were fine with that. He did not request any extra security after hours, nor did he suggest any armed security guards. We also will, you know, have limited visibility, as I was saying earlier, and signage, because we're not for the public, you know, so we don't want that perception out there, nor do we want that attention.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's, there will even be some areas in the building where some employees can't even get into, because it needs to be that secure. And like Christine mentioned, some of those areas of egress on the building will be blocked off, so we want to make this building very, very secure.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you so much. You actually answered my question I was going to ask, if the security guard was armed or unarmed. And as far as your number of employees, I think it's 14, it was mentioned, is that, are those current employees, or will these be new employees that you have?
It would be a mixture. We have some current, and we have, and we will be hiring, and that's, you know, with starting, and hopefully, as we expand and grow, of course, we will. One of our partners, Devin, did you want to speak?
Yes, I'm Devin Duszynski, and D-E-V-I-N, last name, D-U-S-Z-Y-N-S-K-I. My address is 8700 Everton Avenue, E-V-E-R-T-O-N, and that's in Albuquerque, New Mexico. So I'm one of the, one of the partners on this, and we own a fully vertical cannabis license in Albuquerque, New Mexico, that we started from scratch about 18 months ago. So fully vertical means we can do the cultivation, we can do manufacturing, and we can have retail establishments. And so we currently have about 7,000 square feet under canopy in Albuquerque at a grow facility, and then we have a couple of retail establishments. And so our grow facility, talking about the safety, there's no signage on it, the address there is not on any of our documents, and so we try to keep that very regulated. All of our, all of our security is badging in, so we can know who gets in at what time. We can, you know, if we have a disgruntled employee, immediately, we can strip that access from my cellphone, I have access to right now for, in Albuquerque. So from a security perspective, that's how we're planning on, just making sure different employees don't go to different rooms, you know, no contractors can get in. If anything goes on, like, from my phone, I can pretty much call the cops immediately from right now, if I saw, and camera's on my phone, if I saw something else going on after hours. So that's a piece of it. And then from the employee side, we are going to have our director of operations move here with his daughter, and he's actually very excited for that. And so he was, he's owned, he's managed a big operation in California, Nevada, and now New Mexico. And then my father's from Chicago, so I'm very excited to come back up here as well. So I was just looking at houses in Elgin earlier today, so.
Thank you. And my follow-up question to that is, is this is 14 initial employees? And should you have good luck with your business? Do you have an approximate amount of employees that you would have when the facility is fully built out?
So currently, it'll be, Brian is his name, so he'll be coming down here, and then other than that, I'll be hiring 13, you know, Elgin, people from Elgin or surrounding communities. Once we get the approval from the, from the state to expand the canopy, yes, we will be increasing employee count. But a lot of that just depends on, really, when we get that, and then a lot, a lot of the other stuff, like in New Mexico, for example, we have a lot of employees that do packaging specifically within the regs, and so depending on the different regs here and how those mature, you know, I do think we can employ more employees if that happens, because we definitely have the space for it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Valdez?
No questions. Looks like you pretty much said, so good luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Miguelo?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for the petitioner. First, in looking at your space plan here, I didn't see any, like, office space or break-room space for the employees. Can you just comment on that?
Originally, it'll be, because we want to stay with our, we only want to use the space of the building that we need to for right now. So originally, that will be more so behind the receiving area, there's an area behind or before the mechanical room that is going to be, we don't need a lot of office space, but it will be more like a break-room area for the employees there. So there is space for it, and it is allocated for that. These were kind of a rough draft, to get, to give you a rough idea.
Okay, and what I was going to mention is, as we grow, we have more space in the east portion of the building and upstairs, space for, we plan a workout area for a good work-life balance for our employees, break-room, kitchen area, so things like that. So there is multiple rooms and space to grow into, but for now, it'll just be that initial 5,000 square feet on the west end of the building.
It'll start small and grow.
Okay. I've assumed you researched this already, but can you confirm that the location that's specified in your license is transferable from Chicago Heights to here?
Yes. Yes, and we're waiting for the approval to fill out the change of address location, but yes, they've given it to us, and we're waiting to submit.
Great. Nothing further, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, thanks. It looks like an exciting plan, and I also wanted to comment, thank you for giving a shout-out to Tony and the Elgin Development Group and the chamber, because I saw, read in the packet, that not only are they helping you guys navigate this process, they've been helping the current businesses that were located in that building to relocate. So, thank you for mentioning that, I appreciate it. Thank you, Tony.
And we will be chamber members.
Good luck to all of you.
So if we're ready, we can move on to Commissioner Abuali. Do you have questions for the petitioner?
Yeah, that's what he meant, he's going to move on to me. I do have a couple of good questions. If all goes well, what's the timeline you're looking at to start operations at that location?
I think a lot of it just depends on the, the timing. I think a lot of it just depends on the, the timing of getting permits for construction. We have, you know, full plans already drawn up, but I think with that, after, you know, viewing the facility, the, the good thing about this is it's already sort of, I'm saying sort of condoed out with the office buildings that are there. So the walls, the structure's there, so a lot of it is just coming in, and getting the lights. This, for the initial 5,000 square feet under canopy, there's enough power there, so that's another thing that would delay us in a lot of instances, depending on where we got the building, so we don't have to upgrade power for the initial 5,000 square feet. So I guess to answer your question, hope would, my hope would be to, you know, operations three to four months aggressively, but that's what I'm going to strive for, we're going to strive for.
I mean, I actually read pretty much all 300 pages, so I know you've been working on it for a couple of years, so it's been a long process. Follow-up question for security. First of all, you said 24/7 state monitoring. Is that just like a, a system, an online system? If somebody breaks in, they get notified type thing? I mean, the state's not going to be there, obviously, right?
No, that's, that's for all craft growers in, in the state, so they can patch in at any time, morning, afternoon. They don't have to give us warning. It doesn't have to be an alarm that goes off. If they feel like patching in at a certain time during operations, they can patch in and see exactly what we're doing. So everything would be above table.
Okay. And your other facilities in the other states, what kind of security concerns have you experienced?
For our cultivation facility, mainly just someone thinking they could come in and steal product, I'm much less concerned about a cultivation than I am a retail establishment. You know, there's a lot more, you know, armed robberies and break-ins at night for retail establishments than there are grow operations. And so, but one thing to answer your question, for our alarm system in Albuquerque, New Mexico, which is definitely, you know, not as advanced as, you know, Illinois, but we can, you know, activate at any time, and we have a, we have a 24-hour surveillance team that they'll send you notification, and I can either say bypass, or I could say, do it, and then that's when they'll call the state police or the Albuquerque police. So my assumption is that there's going to be something very similar to here, where the alarm goes off, and you can get notified by the alarm company, yes, call the cops, because we can check the cameras. And so that's what my assumption would be for, have it similar out here.
And one thing that I wanted to mention, there's no activity going on outdoors. So the good thing about this facility that we love is it has access where transporters can pull right into the building, drop off, pick up, and pull right out of the building. So nothing is happening in the parking lot, outdoors, everything is housed right inside the building.
That's good. One of my favorite things is your philanthropic efforts, and you had mentioned training and education and resources in the community. I, I know you give money, which is great, but what are some of those examples you're talking about as far as, like, resources, education?
We have a very diverse team. I am a doctorally-prepared nurse practitioner that is dual-certified in psychiatric, mental health, and family medicine. One of my partners is also a psychiatric, mental health nurse practitioner. We have financial advisors. We have logistics on our team. We have multiple entrepreneurs on our team. So with that being said, we actually plan on doing some kind of, like, either seminar or educate, we want to partner with schools at some point, like internships at some point, or, like, we're excited about even substance abuse programs, because, again, yes, I'm in this industry, but my, my intent is to help the community. So it has to be education out there about safe use, what it, what the education about what cannabis is, what are, how does that break down? What does that look like? Responsible use, and if someone does need help, what do you do and where do you go? Because that's, that's what we are about. So we want to help the community just, even, this is all behind the scenes, right? Nobody will know this.
Yeah.
We're not the ones selling it, if you will, you know? But what we should know is that our community benefits from it, meaning the people and the financial assets coming toward the people should benefit. The community should benefit multiple ways.
I love that. Thank you.
So it's money, it's sweat equity, it's time that we're giving back, education, knowledge, and just going into the schools as well. I mean, cannabis is part of curriculums now in, in universities and colleges. We plan to go in there, and if, if we're invited, and if we're welcomed, go in there and help educate some of those students, and hopefully they can be one of our employees one day. So one thing that Devin mentioned that is very, very important to us is our employees will be right here from Elgin. So that, that will tie back into that economic impact, and we're, we're very passionate about the economic impact piece.
And underprivileged and underserved communities. So part of the state's mission, part of us being social equity is to making sure that we're helping underprivileged and underserved communities and communities. So that is a requirement for us, and it, it's, it's, it's part of our mission. So it's, we're also looking for, you know, certain kinds of applicants as well to make sure that everyone gets a chance and a fair shot.
Because even though we look good, we all came from, we all came from those disadvantaged areas.
A lot of us, you know, some of us are first-time college.
Yeah.
You know, so we've been there, we've done that, and, you know, we've seen our communities and family members impacted, so we want to help.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think what's been said, I support the, the questions and the, the support for, for this development. I also do want to compliment you as a group that if all the petitioner groups came up and followed the instructions of just going through that initial stuff and then stating that it would go so much better here every time we're here. So I appreciate that as well.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions for you, so you can all go cram back in the first row over there.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, so as promised, although we've got just a couple of guests with us tonight who are not part of this petition, we do need to open this up to public comment. So got one gentleman who's already shook his head, no, and another person sitting, oh, nope, got a no from that person as well, so just have to extend the opportunity. We can, I think, pretty safely close the public hearing portion of this petition. Then, as promised, again, look to city staff for any final comments.
Nothing further to add. Nothing further to add. Staff recommends approval subject to the conditions in the packet.
All right. With that said, the chair will entertain a motion for these two petitions, which is 41-22 and 42-22.
I move to recommend that City Council approve petition number 41-22 and 42-22 subject to conditions outlined within our packet, and to adopt as the findings of the commission, those findings also within our packet.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Abouwale?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner McGala?
Yes.
Commissioner Wildemuth?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The motion is approved, 7-2-0.
Well, as you can see from the count on the vote and from the double motions and double seconds, this has been approved, and as I said before, work with staff to find out the dates in the upcoming meetings. Thank you for coming tonight, and best wishes. All right, we can move on to item G, other business. Our staff has presented a schedule to us for the 2023 meeting sessions for the, for this commission. I've taken a look at those and seen how they overlay it on the calendars. It does miss the, the holidays and other things. Now, if we can make them miss our vacation so we can be here every night, but the chair will entertain a motion for the approval if this commission does support that schedule.
I move to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Abouwale?
Yes.
Commissioner McGala?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wildemuth?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 7-2-0.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, public comment. So if there's any of those of you remaining here tonight who want to come on up to the lectern and tell us your thoughts about anything except what is related to the petitions, now is your opportunity. Seeing smiles, but no one's moving this way. We will then look to item I, summary of pending development applications. Demir, take us away.
I don't think I have much to report. The petition tonight that, that was rescheduled, we anticipate that coming in February, hopefully in February if they, if they submit as suggested. In the meantime, we'll have several items at the December meeting, fairly small conditional uses, et cetera. And then the January meeting is the second Monday of the month. That's just a reminder. I'm happy to provide any updates on any other projects that went through, if you guys want.
City Council's caught up with us, apparently, huh?
Well, it's, it's more that the applications that we haven't, that we have received are not ready for planning as one of the commissions, so that's what it is. But yes.
Yeah, it's kind of uncharacteristic to have one item on the agenda for, for us for quite some time.
We, we cleared it and planned it accordingly for the other item, but unfortunately, they requested to not be on the agenda tonight, so that was, that was one of the, that was the initial plan, because we anticipated a long meeting, so whenever it is scheduled, it's going to be a long meeting.
All right, well, we're already nine minutes over my goal, so. Just kidding, want everyone to be, be heard. Appreciate all, all the petition we've heard tonight. All right, then I think we are on to the last item of the agenda, which is the adjournment. Do we have a motion and a second?
Motion or adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. Staff, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
The second was Commissioner Wildemuth.
I forgot it in there.
Someone's got a hot date or something.